All right, it is six oh three. I'd like to go ahead and call our city council meeting for Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty five. I ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Let us prepare ourselves as you see fit. Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you in this state to say thank you, oh Father God. We thank you for every breath that you allow us to take in our lives, oh Father God. We ask that you continue to watch over the city council meeting, oh Father God. We thank you for those that have come out to be a part of this meeting, to voice their concerns, and we also wish that those that have or wish to have come out and were not able, that you continue to watch over them also. Lord, we just thank you for all that you do for us. This we say in your darling son Jesus' name and for his sake.
Amen, amen.
All right. Could we roll call?
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Ray. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Brooks.
Here.
All right, Alderman Murphy says she was not feeling well, but she did like to come on in under Zoom. Could I have a motion to accept Alderman Murphy?
So moved. Second.
As we move Alderman Jackson, second by Alderman Allen, that Alderman Murphy be joining through via Zoom. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Ray. Alderman Brooks.
Aye.
Motion carried. Alderman. Okay, you're now in the meeting via Zoom.
Thank you.
All right, omnibus vote agenda.
Mayor Rockham.
Alderman Allen.
I have a motion to approve five dash one to five dash two. Proven minutes to regular council meeting and standard committee meeting. Send me.
Remove Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Evans, that the omnibus vote agenda be passed as presented. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Coleman.
Can you scroll that up?
Sorry. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Ray. Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Brooks.
Aye.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Motion carried. Citizen comments, public comments.
We have Regis Charlotte.
Just so everyone know, and Regis, I may let you slide a little bit on this either way, President of Lake Bluff, thank you for being here with us today. But you do have three minutes, and the clerk will be taking that, you know, setting the time, and if you hear it beep, please respect the three minutes.
Mayor, thank you, and I trust you can hear me.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Regis Charlo, and I am village president for the village of Lake Bluff. Over the past several weeks, the village of Lake Bluff has repeatedly voiced its opposition to the Brem Realty MCo zoning petition. The sanctuary neighborhood in Lake Bluff is located across US forty-one, Route forty-one, from the property in question. The rezoning request for M three intensive industrial zoning would allow a number of users, uses, including the manufacturing of steel, chemicals, and asbestos products by right within two hundred and fifty feet from these residences. Many residents have voted, voiced their opposition to this project to mean writing. I would like to point out that also the Lake Bluff Elementary School is four thousand feet from this property. Your own planning and zoning commission, consisting of seven residents of North Chicago appointed by you, the mayor and confirmed by city council, recommends the city to deny Brem Realty MCo rezoning petition. That is worth repeating. The city of North Chicago own Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial of this petition. We, Village of Lake Bluff, would expect the city of North Chicago to take its own advisory board seriously to this decision. Would truly hope you will seriously consider a more caution cautious zoning relief approval for this petition. And I would like to say a conditional or limited approval for this truck repair business is reasonable and gives MCo and Brem Realty what they need to secure the tenant they want for the business they want to do on this property. Opening the door to high intensity manufacturing users such as steel, asbestos, and other heavy manufacturing is not necessarily and not neverly, not neverly. People are forty-five feet away from that property. The city can be both a good neighbor and be supportive of local business. And I will repeat this, we're not okay with this zoning request. Please vote no on this zoning request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President. Listen, listen, we're not gonna have applause every time someone gets up here and speaks. I will start removing people, understand? Let's keep it quiet. This is a city council meeting. Thank you.
Debbie Borcio, Borcic.
My name is Debbie Borcic. I am with Certified Out of Body. We are directly across the street from this location. When we were brought into the village of North Chicago, probably
City.
City of North Chicago.
Thank you.
About fifteen years ago, we were brought in as a residential, and we had to come before the board as all of the other businesses did that were on forty-one, and get our M one back. I feel that M one is probably strong enough for over there, and we did talk to different people about if a truck company wants to go over there, which was one of the things that Mr. Taylor told us about or told me personally about, that they would get a special use permit, and that would be the way to go. I just think for the what it is, how it's going to affect our property as well as the residential properties that are that close, this could be very detrimental to the health of everybody around. Thank you.
Courtney Heck.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Heck, and I come before you tonight as not only a local Realtor and resident of Lake Bluff, but a mother of two young children and someone who deeply cares about the future of both Lake Bluff and North Chicago. I was raised in Lake Bluff, and now I'm raising my own family here. My commitment doesn't stop at the village boundaries. I've spent years supporting students and families in North Chicago through my work with North Chicago Community Partners. I believe in the power of strong, connected, and safe communities, and that belief drives why I'm here tonight. I respectfully urge the committee to deny the application to rezone the property at thirty-six oh one Skokie Highway from M one Limited Industrial to M three Intensive Industrial. Here is why this matters so deeply. The sanctuary neighborhood located immediately next to the property is home to many families just like mine. Some of these residents received hearing notices because their home is within two hundred and fifty feet of this site. That's how close this proposal hits the people's everyday lives. The M three zoning being requested allows for heavy industrial use like steel manufacturing, chemical production, even asbestos products uses that under the M one zoning are not allowed. And while I understand the application may not be seeking, may only be seeking an auto repair use today, this zoning change would open the door for much more intensive industrial activity in the future right next to homes. As a Realtor, I can tell you firsthand that the proximity to heavy industrial has a real impact on property values, and more importantly, on people's sense of safety and investment in their community. Decisions like this don't just affect buildings, they affect families, schools, and long-term neighborhood growth. From a planning perspective, the city of North Chicago's own comprehensive plan, just updated last year, identifies this area as commercial industrial flex, not industrial. That distinction matters. The M one district already aligns with the plan's vision, low-impact, light manufacturing, near residential neighborhoods. M three zoning, by contrast, is meant for areas adjacent to rail corridors and existing industrial hubs, not residential homes. I truly believe there's a better solution. If the goal is to retain MCo or to allow auto service uses, perhaps a targeted text amendment to the M one zoning could achieve that without introducing the risks and incompatibilities of M three designation. This isn't about opposing growth, it's about guiding it responsibly. It's about honoring the vision laid out by, in the city's plan, and ensuring that all residents, whether in North Chicago and Lake Bluff, are protected and supported. I care about both these communities, and I know we can work together to find a path forward that reflects care, cooperation, and common sense. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
James Babowich.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Jim Babowich, and I represent the Sanctuary Homeowner Area Association. And the Association of the Property Owners have filed a protest of the proposed map amendment. And we ask that their protest, if not already done, so be made part of the record. The, I know that the council knows the location of the property. And one of the things that came to my mind when I was looking at this was that in its location on forty-one, it's a gateway into the city of North Chicago. And the question, I think, for this board is whether or not it's going to lose control of the use, uses allowed on that property on a go-forward basis. And I'll tell you what I mean by that. With the M three zoning, there are a number of very intensive uses, and one that caught my mind was the feed milling and processing. And feed milling and processing, if if some future user wanted to use the property for that, and you know, Mr. Silverman will tell you this, if there is a permitted use, someone could come in at a later point in time as a matter of right and apply for that. So when you take a look at that, unless the code is changed and there's a text amendment, either reducing what might be allowed in that particular area, someone could come in and utilize it for that. So you have a situation where, again, there are a lot of unknowns relative to this because there aren't constraints relative to a map amendment. It could be anything that is listed in the M three area, and that's, I think, where the problem lies. And with regard to that, for example, if there's something which the city of North Chicago wants at a later point in time, and again, not saying Brem's, but a future user, let's say they sell it. A future user could come in and say, we want to use this. It's a permitted use. And sure enough, they'd be able to have that permitted use, even if the city of North Chicago doesn't want it. And I think that in the, relative to the comprehensive plan, and I looked at that as well, and again, looking at the location, the flex makes absolute sense. It talks about industrial in the rear and a commercial retail type of utilization in the front. You're coming up forty-one. Again, that's a gateway to the city of North Chicago, you're gonna see that. And it's one of those things where, when the comprehensive plan was put together, it makes sense. So one of the things that, one of the last things I want to say, and when I looked at the thing.
James O'Donnell. Dr. James O'Donnell.
Thank you. I'm also here about the same amendment for the Brem's Realty property, three six oh one Skokie Highway. I work in North Chicago. I live about five minutes away from this site as well. I'm also a toxicologist. And there are a lot, there's a lot of research out there linking proximity to the sources of chemical pollution to serious health diseases like Parkinson's cancer, a lot of other diseases. And that's for chemical pollution that's a lot less than industrial level that's being proposed here. So I'm very concerned. I'll also note there's, you know, there's certainly a lot of residencies very close. There's also university, very large hospital complex, FHCC, that's very close as well. And so I urge that you vote this amendment down. Thank you.
Asher Moya.
First.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. I first wanted to say thank you for starting this meeting with a prayer and honoring God, and I appreciate that. And as a member of the board and representative of the sanctuary community of Lake Bluff, I respectfully submit the following position in opposition to the proposed zoning map amendment filed by the Brem's Realty LLC to rezone the property from M one to M three. This proposed rezoning raises significant concerns across several critical areas. Negative impact on community well-being. Rezoning M three would allow high-intensity industrial uses that are incompatible with the surrounding environment. Intensive industrial operations bring increased levels of noise and air pollution, heavy truck traffic, light and waste output. This creates real potential harm of the quality of life for nearby residents, workers, visitors of North Chicago, along with Lake Bluff and the surrounding cities. Contradiction of city planning goals. This request appears inconsistent with many public available comprehensive or long-range development plans for the city of North Chicago. Spot zoning, a single parcel to M three without border planning justification undermines coherent land use policy and may open the door for further rezonings. Insufficient clarity and transparency. The petition does not clearly identify the future intended use of this site. Rezoning without transparency about the developer's actual plans is a risky precedent. M three zoning permits some of the most intensive and disruptive types of industrial activity. Approving it without specifics is premature and potentially damaging. The environmental and infrastructural strain. The city must consider the environmental and infrastructural consequences of this change to M three. It can be used as it could increase the risk of contamination or hazardous incidents, require costly mitigations that may fall on taxpayers if not properly managed. Also, the economic opportunity costs. While industrial development is important, prioritizing intensive industrial zoning over flexible, light industrial or commercial mixed-use development could deter other forms of economic activity that might generate broader and more sustainable benefits to our community. In conclusion and recommendation, given that these concerns, I urge the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny there is a rezoning request at this time. At the very least, this proposal should be deferred until a comprehensive land use is conducted or the applicant provides full transparency about the intended use of the property and the appropriate environmental and traffic impact studies are completed. Our zoning decisions must be rooted in long-term planning, community protection, and responsible development. This was also, as it stands, does not meet that standard. I thank you again for all your service and time.
David Brown.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Brown from the Sanctuary of Lake Bluff. And tonight I would like to share some points of concern on the proposed M one to M three intensive industrial rezoning of the MCo property, thirty-six oh one Skokie Highway, North Chicago, as this property is adjacent to the Sanctuary of Lake Bluff and Knollwood Residential Housing Developments. Number one, congratulations are due to your own North Chicago's Planning and Zoning Committee, which has wisely voted down the MCo M one to M three rezoning application. This committee is an instrumental part of the community's safeguarding process, and their nonapproval finding of the zoning change application has merit and should be followed. Number two, how does anyone in this day and age believe that allowing a potential heavy industrial use facility within two hundred and fifty feet of a highly populated residential community is a good idea? This is two thousand twenty-five, where it is known what can happen to people who are exposed to chemicals in the air or the calamitous effects of an explosive catastrophe. Number three, to go against your own planning and zoning department's recommendation would be granting an outsized special benefit to the property holder that is not in the best interest of our mutual community's health and safety. This would be awarding unearned agency to the property owner. Where is the line drawn between the pursuit of good government planning and reckless activity? I believe it can be demonstrated that those who grant agency are also civilly liable for the set effects of the benefit awarded. Number four, I've heard a rumor, I didn't want to go here, that voting members of the North Chicago City Council have received reoccurring cash donations from MCo, the property owner of thirty-six oh one Skokie Highway. If that is true, those people should abstain and not be voting on this industrial rezoning, as that sounds like pay-to-pay, pay-to-play politics to me. The bottom line, we all need common sense results, and I encourage the North Chicago City Council members to vote no on the proposed M one to M three intensive industrial rezoning application, as I believe we are not getting the full story here on Mco's future redevelopment plans. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Omar Kazmi.
Esteemed council members, residents of North Chicago and Lake Bluff, we find a defining moment. The zoning and planning advisory commission, after careful deliberation, passed a motion to deny the applicant's petition to rezone from M one Light Industrial to M three Heavy Industrial. This decision protects both of our community's health and future. Why would our elected officials consider overturning this recommendation? I implore the commission's denial and reject M three's rezoning to preserve both of our cities. The zoning and planning advisory commission, the eyes and ears of the community, thoroughly evaluated the petition. Their denial reflects the dangers of M three zoning, which allows not just the applicant's intended use, but also potentially factories, chemical plants, hazardous waste site with minimal oversight. M one zoning with its strict conditional use permits and environmental reviews ensure you can safeguard our neighborhoods from pollution, heavy traffic, and declining property values. The commission's decision, grounded in expertise and public input, is clear. M three threatens our community. What might lead our trusted representatives to go against this? The applicant promises economic benefits, tempting a short-term gain, but ignoring the commission's, the advisory commission's recommendation, risk undermining the public trust in both North Chicago and Lake Bluff and inviting long-term harm from heavy industry. North Chicago deserves a solution that balances development with safety, and M one, like an M one amendment tailored to specific needs without sacrificing oversight. Honored council, you shape both North Chicago's as well as Lake Bluff's future. The commission's denial is a roadmap to a stronger city. Upholding it shows you prioritize residents over risky rezoning. Deny the M three petition as advised. Consider M one amendments for precise uses, but don't jeopardize the future of North Chicago's community with M three dangers. Act now. Stand with your advisory commission. Protect the cities. Prove that North Chicago's voices matter. Thank you.
Colette Bovett-Bavitas.
Hi there, my name is Colette Bovitas. On the application for map amendments, a list of standards for granting a map amendment are provided for the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council to consider when making their decision. I'd like to point out the responses on the Brem's Realty map amendment application don't tell the whole story. In response to standard A, the existing use and zoning of nearby property, Brem's responds, the subject property is currently zoned M one. The adjacent property to the north is zoned M three. Surrounding properties consist of a mix of industrial and commercial uses, making M three a logical and consistent designation for the requested rezoning. What is left out of this response is the issue. The properties to the west are fully residential. The sanctuary neighborhood of a hundred and seventy-seven homes is so close that some of the homes were within two hundred and fifty feet and required legal notice. There is no mention of the residential neighborhood to the west. Properties to the east in North Chicago are also residential and filled with Navy housing residence. There is no mention of the residential neighborhood to the east. The Brem's response is a half-truth that doesn't consider the adjacent residential neighborhoods. In response to standard C, the extent to which the proposed amendment promotes the public health, safety, and welfare of the city, Brem's responds, rezoning to M three will encourage economic development, attract new businesses, and create job opportunities. With more flexible industrial and commercial use, the property can contribute to tax revenue while maintaining compliance with safety standards and environmental regulations. The response does not satisfy the question of public health, safety, and welfare. And once again, what is left out here is significant. The introduction of more intensive industrial uses actually increases the risk of danger to the public's health and safety. Please consider the phrase unintended consequences. A real example of unintended consequences right in Lake County came to light several years ago. In two thousand eighteen, the EPA released a report which identifies areas of the country that may have increased cancer risk based on emissions estimates for toxic compounds. They identified the Waukegan Gurnee area as potentially having elevated cancer risk with ethylene oxide identified as the predominant pollutant. Sometimes these unintended consequences are not revealed until well after the damage is done. And there are no amount of safety standards and environmental regulations that can prevent accidents. Rezoning to M three intensive industrial with adjacent residential neighborhoods does not promote public health and safety. Thank you.
Gail Morgan.
I would like to follow up on where Colette left off with the standard deed for zoning. The relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed on the applicant. The applicant states the proposed rezoning benefits the public by fostering business growth, increasing employment opportunities, and generating additional tax revenue. Conversely, denying the rezoning request would limit economic development and place an unnecessary restriction on the property owner, his ability to utilize his land effectively. So the hardship illustrated here is that there is unnecessary restriction on the ability to utilize land effectively. What is omitted in this statement is that there are two options that would allow the applicant to effectively use this land. These options are commonly used municipal tools. Option one is the text amendment. It involves changes to the language of the zoning ordinance itself, doesn't directly alter the zoning map, but rather modifies regulations that apply across zoning districts. These have the benefits of flexibility and adaptability to reflect evolving community needs, unforeseen circumstances. They have a broader impact across multiple properties. They address incorrect inconsistencies, outdated provisions, and introduce new regulations. Option two is a special use permit. A special use permit allows the property to be used in a ways compatible with their surroundings. A special use. Oh shit, sorry. Under certain circumstances, local regulations recognize the need for a case-by-case determination of whether a certain use in a particular zoning district should be permitted. It allows a property to be used in a way that isn't generally permitted by the written right within the designated zoning district. While certain uses are allowed by right, others require additional scrutiny and approval to ensure they won't negatively impact the surrounding area. There is no hardship for the applicant in denying this application. Other commonly used options exist to accomplish the applicant's goals of economic development and the related benefits to the city of North Chicago. and the related benefits to the city of North Chicago.
Thank you.
Tom Malone.
Good evening. I oppose, my name is Tom Malone and I oppose Brem's property M three zoning application because it contradicts the two thousand twenty four City of North Chicago Comprehensive Plan. This plan was crafted with sixteen months of community input and envisions a city of thriving neighbors, growing homeownership, revitalized corridors like Sheridan Road and a vibrant, family friendly downtown. It's a blueprint for sustainable growth and equity that we must protect by rejecting M three intensive industrial zoning. One of the standards used for evaluating this application for M three zoning is, in quote, the consistency of the proposed amendment with the comprehensive plan. In their proposal, the applicant never mentions the comprehensive plan. The standard of the standard is consistency with the comprehensive plan should be upheld, we believe, and I believe. And is omitted, and that's the issue here. According to a statement read by the certified planner of the City of North Chicago Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on April fourteenth, two thousand twenty five to review this matter. Quote, the staff report points out that the future land use plan labels this property as commercial slash industrial flex. The city's comprehensive plan shows on this future land use map where it differentiates between commercial slash industrial flex and industrial. The latter being more in line with M three intensive zoning, industrial zoning proposed. In the comprehensive plan, the M one district is described as, quote, light manufacturing and commercial offices uses that have a minimum impact on neighbors. These parcels are often located near residential neighborhoods, end quote. Whereas per the comprehensive plan, the M three district is meant to facilitate the growth of older industrial activities. The existing M one zoning meets the comprehensive plan's future zoning designation of commercial industrial flex for the subject property. The proposed M three zoning would be more appropriate for properties designated as industrial or on the future land use map, none of which are near the subject property. Thank you.
Bruce Ankenman.
Thank you for hearing us today. In the previous city council meeting, there was a question asked by one of the council members, I don't remember exactly which one. And the question was, why are all the people of Lake Bluff up here concerned about this? Thank you for listening to us today. The answer that you got to that question last, in the last meeting, was a true statement, which was that the only proposed, the only proposed current use of that of that property is for a truck repair center. And it seemed confusing to the council that why would Lake Bluff be so upset about a truck repair center? I think you're hearing today that it's not the truck repair center. We actually think it's a good idea to have a truck repair center and that you use a text amendment or special use license to allow that. But it is the allowing the Brem's MCO to make the decision about what comes in next. It's a huge building there. And what comes in next, we would like you to make that decision, not Brem's MCO. Under the M one, if something like steel manufacturing or or chemical manufacturing or asbestos manufacturing comes, it would come before you. And you could say that's not a good idea. If it, if the M three text zoning change is passed, then it will not come before you because it's allowed in M three. Maybe there would be some licensing or something like that that would come before you. But then, how would you reject the license, given that it's an M three property which says this kind of industrial use is good, is allowed? So I think it's taking the power away from you and putting the power with the owner of the property. And that's, that's what Lake Bluff and the sanctuary are concerned about. Thank you very much.
Matt Dollar.
Thank you for hearing us today. Appreciate it. So, good evening. So it's a number of neighborhoods who are stakeholders here. So Sanctuary, Knollwood, Forestall Neighborhoods. People all live there, have children that play there. MCO Chemical Distributors seeking an M three zoning for heavy industrial use. It's just, as you've heard several times, it's just within a few hundred feet of some of these homes, some of these residences. It's intensive manufacturing, intensive industrial use. That kind of use is consistent with air pollution, water pollution. It threatens future neighborhoods' value. I'm asking that you deny the approval of M three zoning. A little bit about MCO, some of you are probably aware, they do handle chemicals. Some of them are quite dangerous, like polyisocyanates for paint solvents, acetones, perfectants for cleaners and fluorescent pigments. These all give off fumes, they cause asthma, headaches, or even cancer. In Saget in Illinois, a chemical facility handling these same chemicals made its nearby residents sick. MCO has already had big spills. Seven thousand gallons of methylene chloride from two thousand three to two thousand six polluted a creek in another part of North Chicago, threatening our water. That creek flows into Lake Michigan where everybody in this room gets their drinking water. MCO released six hundred and three pounds of trifluoroethylene in July two thousand seven and five thousand two hundred and twenty four pounds of tert butyl acetate in August two thousand seven. MCO failed to notify state and local response agencies in a timely manner to these spills. This is not the behavior of a good neighbor. More N three zoning means more potential spills and poisoning our drinking water. So in truth, MCO can't be trusted to keep our neighborhoods clean and unpolluted. They do not have a track record of doing this. They explain they need it for a truck zoning repair. I think that is irrelevant. What's relevant is, as you've heard, they could request a waiver for truck repair. Why aren't they doing this? It's difficult to envision anything other than a clear intent to engage in activity that's absolutely incompatible with a neighborhood next door to it. That is the purpose of zoning in the first place. It's ensure quality of life, benefit to the community as a whole, protect property values and ensure health and safety. An M three zone two hundred and fifty feet from our neighborhood allows polluting industries to choke us with fumes, loud trucks and factory noise. Homes lose value, making it hard to stay or leave. And our neighbors are doctors, nurses, pharmacists, teachers. They would probably leave the neighborhood, find a safer place to live, weakens the community. So we deserve a cleaner place to live and safe community for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Renata. Renata.
Hello, honorable council members. I am not a resident of Lake Bluff, I'm a resident of Green Oaks. And not a lot of people know, but a lot of Green Oaks residents depend on private wells for their water. So we can't control what comes to our wells through groundwater. So of course, we are very concerned about the rezoning from M one to M three. And of course, truck repair shop is no concern at all. We hope that's the industry that the Bremco Realties will have and it will provide them a great revenue. But what we are concerned is the industries at M three, as mentioned before by other speakers, I would like to expand on that. And that's waste disposal, incinerators, of course asbestos containing products, processing of animals for food and byproducts, explosives, medical waste and pharmaceutical processing, sanitary landfills, flammable liquids, steel production, foundries, dyes, iron works and battery rebuilding, just to name a few. And we all know by now that all these kinds of interests in these trees destroy the land, the water and the air and make inhabitable to live. So that triggers the question. Can Brem's Realty guarantee that their tenants will not be involved in these hazardous activities? Can Brem's Realty guarantee that they will not sell their property to someone who will engage in these dangerous industrial activities? Because there is no law preventing Brem's Realty from selling this parcel to companies like Waukegan's Old John's Mandel Plant, causing multiple cases of lung cancer in the area by manufacturing asbestos containing insulation. Or DuPage County Blackwell leaking chemicals into the water supplies, making it, making it unsafe to drink. Or battery rebuilding at Illinois's Superfund Sites leaking lead and acid into the soil, endangering children's health. And is it worth putting the city of North Chicago on the line for Brem's Realty and possibly make the city responsible and liable for these kinds of environmental disasters? I also question if it is worth it to go through the trouble of changing current ordinances of the city of North Chicago and zoning laws to facilitate Brem's Realty, since current ordinances of North Chicago barely allow M two zoning near residential neighborhoods with the required buffer zone. And I hope that the council will find it more reasonable to cherry pick every industry that Brem's Realty would like to house in their facilities, allowing Brem's Realty to function at hundred percent capacity, bringing the city of North Chicago the revenue that it needs to grow and flourish while keeping surrounding neighborhoods safe. I sincerely hope that honorable council will make the decision that benefits all and not just Brem's Realty alone. Thank you so much for opportunity to speak.
Constance McCabe.
Hi, I'm Connie McCabe. I've lived in the Lake Bluff, Lake Forest area for the last forty six years and taught at Lake Forest Academy for forty two years as a department chair. I'm here tonight to tell you a personal story of what happens when the environment becomes polluted. In September, two thousand twenty three, I was diagnosed with a golf ball sized brain tumor. After seven hours of surgery and more than fifty staples in my head, the brain surgeon asked me if I'd been exposed to any of four chemicals that he had a list of. I had no idea. I had no idea where these chemicals came from or what they were. But obviously, I'd been living among them and they'd been living in me. It's had a profound effect on my life and my family's life. So you've heard a lot of talk about potential harm. And I'd like to say that that harm is not just theoretical, it's very real. And I'm living proof of that. So please think very carefully before you allow heavy industry within two hundred feet of families and growing children. Thank you.
Paul Slavinas.
Good evening, everyone. Your honor, honored council. A lot has been said already. I don't want to repeat anything. As so much has been said already. I'm speaking as a private citizen, but I'd like to add to the conversation that I'm on the medical staff of the captain level FHCC. I'm also on the clinical faculty of the medical school. And I would just respectfully ask that the committee, the council, consider the fact that there are residential areas on both of those properties. There are patients who live in a long term relationship at the FHCC. And at Roslyn Franklin, there is student housing for long term residents. Thank you.
Just add again, I'm speaking as a private citizen, not on behalf of the university or the United States government. Thank you.
I'll pass that on to them.
Michael Magnicki.
Good evening. My name is Michael Magnicki. I'm resident of Lake Bluff, living at twelve five nine six Metal Circle, directly across the Skokie Highway from the MCO property. I'm a father of two young children who attend Lake Bluff Elementary School and I've served as a trustee on Shields Township. I'm here again tonight to respectfully urge this council to deny the request to rezone from M one to M three. The site is less than two hundred feet from residential neighborhoods in Lake Bluff and North Chicago and less than a mile from our elementary school. MCO handles hazardous chemicals, including industrial solvents, pesticides and fuel additives with known links to cancer, asthma and developmental disorders. Rezoning to M three would allow MCO to expand the volume and types of these materials stored and processed at the site right next to homes, schools and wetlands. What concerns me even more is how this process is unfolding. At last month's meeting, during discussion of assigned variants, Alderman Coleman rightly said, and I quote, "The issue I have is, I don't like the fact that the gentleman came up here and asked me, did our attorney give us this information before I voted? I voted with not enough information and I don't know why I didn't receive the information. I would like to motion to reconsider so we can hear them out," end quote. I respect Alderman Coleman's directness and I believe the same vigilance should apply here. Earlier in this process, the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, the mayor himself used the public comment period to advocate for the rezoning before the commission had even made its recommendation. I found that deeply concerning. When the city's chief executive uses his influence to publicly push a petition during a hearing, it creates a clear appearance of bias or undue pressure. At last month's council meeting, Alderman Coleman asked Taylor Weggen, the city's economic development director, what tenant is the M three request for? Taylor quietly replied, replied, a truck repair shop. The answer was incomplete and frankly misleading. A truck repair shop is already allowable with a simple text amendment or special use permit. This isn't about accommodating a tenant, it's about MCO, who owns the property and stands to benefit, pushing for M three to open the door for higher volume chemical handling and more intensive industrial uses on site. If I'm wrong, then vote down this petition and let them resubmit a clean application for tenant specific use. We do not rezone to M three, a classification reserved for hazardous, pollutive and highly impactful industry. The residents of North Chicago and surrounding communities deserve a fair, transparent and informed process. I ask you to consider the families living next to this property, children, seniors, veterans and working families who cannot afford the risks that come with intensive chemical operations next door. Please vote to deny the M three rezoning. Thank you for your time and for listening to the people who will live with the outcome of this decision.
Mackie Morgan.
Good evening, everyone. It's Marty Morgan. Sorry.
Sorry.
Man writing. I'm here to just summarize several of the last speaker's comments. I think it's important to go back. There's ten very important comments that I want to bring up. First and foremost, Chicago's, North Chicago Zoning and Planning Commission passed a motion to deny this petition. Second, there are four violations to the standard for granting Matt amendments. Standard A, existing use of zoning in nearby property. The properties to the east and west are fully residential and not considered in this position, petition. Standard C, promoting public health, safety and welfare of the city. The petition detracts from health and safety of the city and its neighbors. Standard D, the gain to the public compared to the hardship of the applicant. There are no gain to the public, there's no hardship to the applicant. The text amendment options allows the clients to implement their proposal for a truck repair shop on that property. Standard H, the consistency of the proposed amendment within the comprehensive plan. This petition is inconsistent with the North Chicago Comprehensive Plan. M three zoning isn't necessary for a truck repair shop. M three zoning opens up dangerous possibilities for other uses under current or future owner discretion. Manufacturing of asbestos chemicals, steel manufacturing, current owners make dangerous solvents and current or future owners should not be trusted to protect the neighborhood's health and safety. We should be able to trust the city council to protect our health and safety. The LaSalle factor set by the Illinois Supreme Court in fifty seven demanded zoning to protect public welfare, public, public values, community character, land suitability, legal compliance, these are not being considered. The city council is ceding its power to control and protect its citizens and its neighbors if it approves the M three zoning. I trust that you make a decision to protect the citizens of North Chicago as well as your neighbors. Thank you very much.
Dennis Hall.
My name's Dennis Hall and I live at one two five three seven Metal Circle. I was at the last zoning board meeting and it was mentioned there that this would be a it was mentioned there that this would be a great benefit to the city of North Chicago for accepting the M three. My concern is, how would that benefit us who live across the highway, which is like two-hundred-and-fifty feet away? I don't see where that's going to benefit us at all. Is it going to help our property values? Probably not. Is it going to help our quality of life? Probably not. We get nothing in return except the possibility of a hazard a hazard waiting to happen. And you're giving a blank check to Emco. What I mean by that is they, right now, can put anything they want in that facility without us knowing what they're going to put in it. My question is this, and I don't mean to offend anybody, but if the tables were turned and you live two-hundred-and-fifty feet from this facility, how would you feel about it? And I think with a clear conscience, I think that you would probably say, "I wouldn't want any part of that." Especially if you have a family and kids. It can affect kids' cognitive development. It can cause cancer, among other things. And the question I have to Emco, can they guarantee a hundred percent that there would not be a structural failure where chemicals would be released? Can they guarantee a hundred percent that there would not be any human error or accident that would occur there? And I don't think that they can do that, as was the case in twenty oh-seven, and my neighbor will shed light on that. The other thing is, you know, it's unfortunate, but people in our society right now are more concerned about money than people's safety. And it's unfortunate because that's not just, that's across the board. That's across the board, and I saw it firsthand. I was in North Carolina, lived there for a while, saw the problems at Camp Lejeune, saw the problems at Cherry Point, when all the chemicals got into the ground, got into the water, and it caused, as you watch any commercials on TV, you know what's going on there. So in closing, I just want to tell you, the way I look at it is health as well. And by changing M one to M three, you're jeopardizing our health and quality of life. And again, in that closing, would you want to live two-hundred-and-fifty feet from this facility? Thank you all.
Walt Thomas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, all the persons. I just wanted to mention that I have a few copies, if anyone's interested, in EPA publication oh-nine-OPA-one-eight-one. The Emco Corporation settled with the EPA and agreed to pay an eighty-two-thousand-dollar fine, and that was for the facility at twenty-one-hundred Commonwealth, North Chicago. Two hazardous releases occurred in two thousand and seven, six-hundred-and-three pounds of trichloroethylene, which is very toxic, five-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-four-pound release in August of two thousand and seven. The company failed to promptly report the releases in a timely manner. The sanctuary where we live in Lake Bluff is about two-hundred-and-fifty feet directly west of that area. In addition, Lake, the Great Lakes Housing is about eight-hundred feet directly to the east. We've talked a lot about hazardous spills and whatnot, and it certainly does not appear that they're one-hundred percent, nor are they very honest in reporting these things in a timely fashion. So I respectfully ask, did you vote this down? And be good neighbors. That's all we ask. We're not asking for the moon. We're just asking for consideration. Thank you.
Marietta Hans.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Marietta Hans. I live in Lake Bluff, where I've been a resident for twenty-three years. I come at this from a little bit of a different perspective. My heart and soul, time, energy, and resources go into land restoration. Local land registry, rest- restoration. Thank you. So a little background, a friend of mine called me just about a month ago and said, "Oh, my gosh, did you hear that the city of North Chicago is thinking about rezoning an area from M one to M three?" And I thought, "I wonder what that means." So I looked it up, and I found the definition of M three to mean "heavy industry that generates noise, traffic, and pollutants." And I thought, "That is not good, and I need to get involved." So I did, and Greg Jackson has been very helpful in providing information for me. Seen the maps, the petitioner packet, and we've all looked at this and heard from everyone about the intellectual aspect of this argument. And there are strong arguments on both sides. But in listening to everyone, there is also the voices of compassion and the emotional impact that this kind of change would have in this beautiful natural area where we live in. Who would not want economic development, increased tax revenue, and more jobs? But changing a district from M one to M three has a price. It doesn't come without problems. I'm coming to you from the natural aspect, the compassionate side, and I ask that we all remember that we cannot afford to forget or ignore the responsibility we have as stewards of the land, the air, and the water, and all of the natural resources. We have the privilege of living in. I also think that we need to think not only of ourselves, not only of our children, but our grandchildren and generations to come, because the kind of changes that we're talking about, to rezone from M one to M three, will have, I believe, a negative impact for generations to come. And I borrow the words that we heard tonight, which are, "These changes could affect every breath we take." Thank you so much.
Thank you. Zemin Wang.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and esteemed council members. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak this evening. I'm a teacher of thirty-four years, and today's the first day of my retirement. As a matter of fact, I teach on Monday evenings. I wouldn't be able to come to this meeting if it were not my retirement. I really, you know, I know many members have spoke out, but this proposed zoning amendment is right across the road from my home, where I lived for the last twenty-four years. Many community members have spoke out of the significant adverse health and environmental effects the proposing, proposed zoning change can bring. I'm here only to urge the beloved council members to vote the way you would if the proposed zoning amendment is right across the road from your home with elderly and children. Thank you.
Mike Kazmi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The mayor and the council. I am a resident of Sanctuary Lake Bluff for the last thirty-plus years, and I have a concern about this zoning change. I am here to just let my thoughts out. If, in very simplistic way, if the request is only for a repair, car repair shop or truck repair, it should not be a request, it should not be considered as a change of zoning from M one to M three. This could be granted by a simple special use permit, but looks like there is a bigger idea behind this zoning change and which will open a futuristic penduro box for unlimited possibilities of hazardous chemical environmental change and effect on the not only North Chicago, but also on Lake Bluff area. So my request will be to simply grant them what they are asking for, just a truck repair shop without any futuristic ambition or thoughts of having a heavy industrial complex, which will be bad for the whole area, not only for the Lake Bluff, but also for the North Chicago area. So I will respectfully request you guys, everybody, the council member and the mayor, to just grant them their request for a truck shop, truck repair shop, without changing the zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yelena Buttman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Yelena Buttman, and I've been resident of Sanctuary Community for over twenty years. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today and to really express my very strong composition to this proposal. All committee members provided multiple valid, strong arguments against this proposal, so I would like to be very brief. I only talked as a mother of two sons, that I always hoped they would come back and raise their families in turn in this neighborhood. However, this future proposal provides serious consideration for future livability of this neighborhood, environmental impact, health, public health impact, and all the multiple impacts that are really negate their short-term potential development opportunity. I urge you all to really vote against it and find workable, possible solutions for business as well or for our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Commissioner Carmesia Hawthorne.
Well. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Rockenbaum, and all our wonderful aldermen and guests and constituents. Welcome. Well, I'll take a breather for that one. All right, so we have some friendly announcements tonight, again. So one of the things I want to say, False Park, we will be officially open our parks May twenty-four. So we're definitely excited about that. Also, we have our square in this Wednesday at the seven o'clock meeting. You guys are all invited. But on to the grand stuff that we want to get the community to know. We have kids in summer camp. And we're going to go a little fast tonight for time's sake. We got kids in summer camp starting June ninth through August first. Please contact the district to sign those babies up for this nice, wonderful event. Also, it's flyers at the back for everything that I'm announcing. Next we got coming up June fourteenth, it's a kickoff at Vision Park for the Inflatable Festival. Remember, guys, we're all big kids and big bodies, so we're going to have some fun with this, guys. It's an all-in family fun day, so we want you guys to come out and participate. Also, we got the Lemonade Stand Contest Day. Woo! So all you people that love the Lake Lemonade, I need you guys to get in contact with our district so you can register, and you can get the best lemonade there. It's going to be here at False Park on this particular day, which is Friday, June twenty-seven. Stay tuned for that. That's going to be a good one. And lastly, from False Park, it's Field Day. Field Day will be actually July twenty-third, and we're going to be giving awards. There's going to be a sack race, and it's going to be a lot of fun, guys. So we want you guys to come on out. You're never too old to have fun. That's kindly from the False Park. Now, last but not least, North Chicago Loving Library, that's what we are. We have a class that's coming up because it's going to be a little hot, so we all need to learn how to stay hydrated, preventing dehydration for North Chicago Library. That's going to be June fifth at ten a.m. Please call the library to register. Also, we have our senior sessions, and you're seeing, our seniors basically will get to come and play arts and crafts, bingo, and watch movies, so please call and register for that event as well. And last but not least, Makers Camp, which would be for the grade six through twelve, which will be every Wednesday starting from June eleventh to August thirteenth this summer. So guys, stay tuned, and this completes these wonderful announcements from your favorite commissioner, Commissioner Carmesia Hawthorne from False Park District. You guys have a wonderful night.
Thank you. You too. All right. Is that it? Thank you. Thank you, Madam clerk. All right, regular agenda, seven-dash-one, consideration and approval of the an ordinance petition by Green Realty requesting a map amendment for the property located at thirty-six-oh-one Skokie Highway.
Mayor Rocken.
Alderman Evans.
I would like to approve of an ordinance petition by Bram's Realty requesting a map amendment for the property located at thirty-six-oh-one Skokie Highway as presented.
Second. To move Alderman Evans, second, Alderman Allen, that seven-dash-one be passed as presented. Other questions? Hearing none?
I have a question.
Alderman Murphy.
Yes. I'm not sure who to direct this to, perhaps our city attorney. I would like some clarification on licensing. So for example, if in fact, for, actually for any zoned area, right? No matter what the designation is, the city licensing and ordinances still prevail in terms of whether or not an applicant actually can become a licensed business in the city. Is that correct?
Yes, they would still have to go through all of the licensing procedures for business to operate in the city. They, in addition to any other applicable ordinances of the city, as well as state and federal laws.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Alderman Coleman. Question until the attorney just popped up. We are in charge of the list of what goes in M three and what doesn't, and what... So we could always pick something out, too, right?
Yes, there's an amendment process you could go through to remove uses out of the M three.
So if there was like a use that would be detrimental to the air, we, as aldermen, we could vote it and say, "We don't want that in that district."
You could. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. But wait, I do want to make sure you understand one thing. The M three district is set up as a heavy manufacturing district, so right now it contemplates allowing a lot of uses that you've heard a lot of concern about this evening. By right, they don't have to go through any additional special process. They can come in so long as they meet all the zoning requirements, and as I just said a minute ago, any other applicable laws, they can get their permit to operate. But...
Any other questions? Hearing none? Roll call.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Atlin.
Aye.
Alderman Ray. Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Brooks.
Aye.
Alderman Jackson.
No.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Motion carried. Seven-dash-three, oh. Uh, seven dash three, oh, seven dash two, we'd like to remove that until June second. Is that okay? Uh, do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, uh, someone should make a motion to continue.
Make a motion that we, uh, make a motion, man.
To, okay.
To move it to June second.
It's been moved by Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Evans, that uh, seven dash two be moved to June second. Are there any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Ray. Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Brooks?
Aye.
Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, seven dash three, city bills?
Mayor Rockham.
Alderman Allen.
I make a motion that we approve the city bills, plus the special one, special two, and special three. The total for all four of those is five hundred and one thousand, five hundred fifty-four hundred and two cent, and four cent, and funds come available.
We move by Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Evans, that the city bills be paid as presented. Are there questions on the city bill? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Ray. Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Brooks?
Aye.
Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman? Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Motion carried. Miscellaneous business, anything under miscellaneous?
Uh, Ms. Mayor.
Uh, Alderman Jackson.
I would like to commend the uh, Public Works for, I believe I was out of town um, this past week, and I believe there was a tree that fell uh, in the eleven hundred block of uh, Levin Street, we'll say. And they took care of it in a timely fashion. I heard them early this morning, so I'd like to commend them for the work that they've done on uh, on the neighbor's tree on the parkway.
We will pass it on. Anything else under miscellaneous?
Mayor, just one, I just wanted also to thank all of the uh, Police Department, the Fire Department, for all the work that we went out through, through the city, looked at some things that we didn't like, and we did a great job on that, so I want to say thank to your department for all the work they did on that.
Alright, very good. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Coleman.
Um, I would like to thank everybody that came out to the meeting and made the second ward meeting happen. Uh, I appreciate it. And I would like to also have a special acknowledgement for Alderman Evans that represents our city. Uh, for Public Works and such a great job that he's doing in our Public Works Department. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Uh, also want to recognize Alderman Evans on his appointment to Shields Township. On uh, what's the board you're appointed to? Very good. Well, congratulations on your.
I wanted there today, and uh, I hope all, all you guys that's here today, I really hope you guys come out to Shields Township because there is a lot of knowledgeable things to come out to see, and I like the fact that you are in a, in a unified manner. But come out to Shields Township, I see one of the former, I, I was looking at him, I was like, man, that look like one of the former trustees, so you know, I am proud to work with all of you, and I'm telling you, oh, the, the communication is there. And we all could solve some of the issues, but I really like the fact that you guys are out here. I don't see you guys at Shields. Now, I do be happy at Shields a lot, but if you start coming out to Shields and you want to speak to me, feel free, we can work together. Thank you.
Alright. Uh, hearing none, none, nothing else, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session five, ILCS one twenty slash two, C eleven pending and uh, in limited litigation.
Don't move.
It's been moved by Alderman Allen.
Second.
Second by Alderman Jackson, that we go into executive session. Uh, roll call.
Uh, who did I do last? Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Brooks?
Aye.
Alderman Jackson?
Aye.
Alderman Coleman?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Ray?
Motion carried. To the audience, we will be uh, in executive session, we will be returning shortly. Alderman, uh, Alderman Coleman, that we open, reopen our city council, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I'd like to close our city council meeting. Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Jackson, second by Alderman Allen, that the city council meeting stand adjourned. Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, now it's like council's supposed to be. Alright, I'd like to open up the committee as a whole, could have a roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman?
Present.
Alderman Evans?
Here.
Alderman Allen. Alderman Ray?
Here.
Alderman Murphy?
Present.
Alderman Brooks?
Present.
Alright, uh, committee as a whole, uh, I have, if anyone has any questions and either the department heads, uh, we can speak, or any concerns? If not, yeah, go ahead.
Um, the treasurer knew he wasn't going to be here tonight, so that's why he didn't submit his report, because he, it's usually questions about it, so he wouldn't be able to answer.
Right, okay. Uh, if not, then I'd like to go into uh, uh, number two, review of InterDev informational technology service.
Member, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I supplied the council members with a memorandum to address the issue that was brought up a couple weeks ago about performance standards. We have a performance standards and evaluation on the uh, the consultant contract for AMM for the um, Public Works. We also have now put a performance measure program in place for InterDev for the purposes of IT services, which will be on a cycle. It'll get reported ultimately at the end of the year to the council as to the progress and what's been accomplished or not. We've already approved a three-year agreement, but the council, uh, I'm sure the council's aware, but it bears repeating that the uh, or bears mentioning that the um, contract with InterDev can be terminated within sixty days. So if we get to that ten-month cycle, we find that we're very, we're not pleased with the work at all. Uh, we look at the performance measures that are presented to the council, the council's not comfortable with it, then at that point, we can start proceeding to make a change. So, uh, this was, uh, this was a request of Alderman Evans uh, for us to take a look and have more accountability for our contractual service providers with performance measures.
One thing though, uh, just to make council aware, uh, one of the things that I know Greg put out uh, in an email, and I think it's uh, appropriate, that staff does have to start doing, uh, putting in reports of issues or concerns that they have with InterDev, so that we can keep track to make sure that if they've got a trouble report, then we could tell if they're getting, getting their reports resolved or not. If staff just comes by as, as, you know, InterDev is walking through the hall and says, hey, I got a problem on my computer, and you know, uh, and then staff comes back later on and says, well, they never fixed my computer. Well, you never turned the report in, so how does, you know, how do we track their progress or not? So they have to be able to put in a report, that way we know that, you know, that report is getting resolved or it hasn't been resolved, or you know, there's a, there's a problem.
If I may, what we do at my employer is, there is a ticket process. You do that, they have to answer that ticket, and it goes to the manager or the director of IT on what services they provide it. So you have documentation, it's not word of mouth, it's not handshake or anything like that, so
Exactly what we're telling.
Do that, that'll be great.
And they're, and they're sending, they're sending the tickets to me as well.
Okay, that's, that's, that, that works really well.
Yes, that's the process we're doing, right.
And we should see those tickets every month, correct? The monthly report should show us.
Reflect the tick.
The number of tickets.
Right.
And how many were resolved.
Exactly. Also, when the um, the Aldermen themselves or any elected officials that, because I know one of our colleagues here, he's always putting in a ticket to get things done. I just want to make sure that that's reported to us, and I know he does it on, you know, he does put the ticket in, so.
Yep.
I want to make sure that we can see that.
Yeah, we'll be able to see it, we'll be able to see departments, they'll break it down for us any way we want.
Got you, thank you.
Anything else?
As a sidebar to that, some, something similar to Wanda's gonna talk about shortly, so not steel or thunder is purchase orders, we're gonna start doing those now.
Okay.
Better to track our purchases and our bills.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, the second, uh, discussion of engagement agreement with Kevin Riggs Consulting Group for Government Relations. Uh, as we were approving the fiscal year twenty-six budget, uh, several of the Aldermen urged the mayor to use the money for the Government Affairs Consultant. The former Alderman from the fifth ward was very vocal about it. Uh, you know, said that he saw the value in it, I think we all did. Counsel, uh, counsel saw the value in it two years ago, unfortunately, we didn't get an engagement in the last year. Uh, the company that I provided the information to you now, Kevin Riggs Consulting Group for Government Relations, Kevin Riggs and Frank Basque, when you look at their paperwork, are lobbyists that have served like communities, uh, underserved communities. Uh, they are, they've been established in Springfield for a number of years, they're a minority-owned company. Um, they've done work for suburbs in the south. Kevin himself does work in Springfield, Frank is in Springfield as well, but Frank does some work up here as well. Uh, the price that they quoted us in this proposal is really a good price. It's, uh, we, we went and budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand, the price came in at sixty. Um, we also looked at what they were gonna be providing us, and keeping in mind that the uh, uh, mayor, the Aldermen who go to IML, the Aldermen who go down for Lobby Day, uh, you're all actively engaged, plus you all have good relationships with our state legislators as well, which helps us get uh, some of the successes, especially when it comes to money and other things along the way. So.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want, yeah, yeah. You said sixty thousand dollars now, but he's, he's, he's off.
For two, for two lobbyists.
Two lobbyists. Now, they can't bring in more than what they pay us than.
We can't, we can't, I get it, we can't say that. It's like the grant writer and telling the grant writer, you, we're gonna, we're gonna pay you what you bring in, you can't, you can't do that, but you are, to your point, Alderman, I know where you're going, you absolutely can evaluate what their successes were based on the numbers that came in. Yes, performance measures again.
I'm, I'm just telling you, because I know it's sometimes, it's gonna be some tough hours right now, I'm just saying, if we had some other lobbyists in here, they didn't do a good job. We did it for a couple years, Mayor, you remember? They brought nothing back, but some of these, these grant writers, they, they get a percentage of what you, what you bring in.
You can't do that, it's illegal.
What, what's that? I thought the grant writers did.
It's illegal. And the reason it is illegal is because grant writers would accommodate the person, the grantee, or the grantor.
Yeah.
And the grantor would end up, so it's illegal.
I thought they, okay, I thought somebody told me that, that they write and they charge so much. Okay, okay, okay. But I'm just saying, I just want to make sure that when we bring people in, that they bring in the money in too, because.
The, the, the issue of, uh, I'll, I'll just share this real quick, the issue of Bob Miller's contract, the AMM Enterprises contract, the InterDev contract.
Right.
And when we talk about right now, what we're talking about with, with the Government Affairs.
Right.
There's never been, those are not bad things, they served as a catalyst for us as a city to go places we haven't gone before, which is now performance measures and hold people accountable.
Okay.
So that's a good thing.
Thank you.
The sixty thousand as per?
No, it's two of them.
For two.
It's for the firm, they got, so they've got the debt.
Gotcha, gotcha. And is that like a per year?
Yeah, five thousand a month.
Okay.
With, with the typical out clause. It's typical thirty.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Alderman Coleman?
So at any thirty days?
With written notice.
Okay, thirty days written notice.
So I just want to say, I, I, I've worked with uh, uh, Frank and Kevin, you know, just even though we're, we're not engaged with them, they have been kind of keeping us informed of what's going on and things that are going on down in Springfield. And I think they are very, very knowledgeable, and they do know how to work Springfield. I mean, just by, you know, seeing and watching them, I think they will be, uh, hopefully be very beneficial for the city of North Chicago.
Mayor, would you like me to discuss the crime-free housing?
If you don't mind, since we're now in open.
So crime-free housing legislation, I believe it's Senate Bill twenty-two sixty-four, could be twenty-two thirty-four, it escapes me right now. Uh, would basically take away this, uh, city's home rule authority to use tools in the toolbox such like nuisance enforcement. When we turn around and have a property that's had repeated offenses, and then we bring them to nuisance court. Uh, Alderman Allen, that would be, uh, the things we were able to do with Brookstone. We wouldn't be able to do it anymore.
Okay.
So it, it handcuffs, handcuffs us to a great extent. Yeah, crime, crime-free housing is, crime-free housing is a tool, and, and, you know, Taylor and his profession and the col- his colleagues. This is a tool, and people are saying that it's a, the advocates to get rid of it say it's a tool that um, is discriminatory, can be used against landlords, say, and what the tool is for is to make sure the next-door neighbors are safe, make sure the next-door neighbors have a quality of life, that they don't have to worry about this neighbor doing things. If we weren't, and we'll just use Brookstone as an example, we know how we got Brookstone into, to move, and that was to put them in the room and hit them in their pocket.
Right.
And take enforcement action, and whether that be their Prairie View, some of the homes where we've had, uh, uh, crime, criminal activity in the past, those are tools for us, and it also affects businesses.
Right.
You know, that's, that's our nuisance tool there too. So, um, I put in a witness slip note at the request by IML, uh, voicing, uh, opposition to the bill. What's the scary part of the bill is that it's on third reading, which means it's nearing approval. What's also scary about the bill is that one of the co-sponsors was the Senate President, Don Herman.
And?
Senator, Senator Johnson.
Yes, our senator.
Okay.
So if you guys want to make calls to Senator Johnson and, and say, you know, hey, we, we are not, you know, in favor of this.
What's that bill number again?
Believe it's Senate Bill twenty-two sixty-four. David, do you have that?
I'll be going, okay.
I believe so.
I know IML is, has been pushing this for some time, they're, they're working down in Springfield to, to try to, you know, uh, get it out, you know, but uh, you know, they have said they've made some changes, it, it went from a ugly to a bad, you know, so, but it's still out there.
So, so what do we do if that bill passes and we still have all this nuisance going on? How do we control that?
I, I defer to legal, we'd have to find some new tools in the toolbox, but, but it, it would make us, it would, it would, it would put us into a, a tough, a tough spot.
Right.
It really would. So, yes, and we'd, we'd have to dig in and see, okay, what can we do? The one thing we have is we're home rule. But what authority can we use? But then when we turn around and talk about they're taking a home rule, uh, uh, an option we can use home rule for away from us again, it almost asks, begs the question, why are we home rule? Home rules more about, it's less about raising revenues and it's more about taking care of our community.
So I just, I wanna make sure that I'm understanding this also, um, so for example, some of the leverage that we were able to bring to bear. To get Brookstone to come into line. We would lose much if not all of that leverage if this were to pass.
That's correct, Alderman.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I understand, that's, that makes my blood run cold, but. That's another story, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding what I'm hearing, so, thank you.
All right, is there anything else?
Yes, mayor.
Oh, yes, oh, hey, how are you?
Hey, how you doing, getting this Kevin Riggs?
That's, uh, one of our lobbyists.
Yes, sir, I'm here, so just a suggestion. Um, if, if you all could, you all could send me and, uh, Frank Bass, my colleague. Uh, just some bullet points on your position, and we can get him over to Senator Johnson tomorrow, we're actually here in Springfield, uh, tonight. We can connect with her tomorrow morning when she, uh, arrives, but then also, we could talk to some of our contacts over in the house. And ask one of the members over there to possibly pre-file for the bill, and then force negotiation from that point. Where we get your position, uh, heard even more.
Happy to do it, Kevin.
I deferred one of the elected officials. I was just gonna give some clarification. Go ahead, uh, attorney.
So, um, it was originally scheduled for a third reading, uh, April third, twenty twenty five. Through some of the senate rules, the third reading deadline is established as May twenty third. Um, Kevin may know this, there's a floor amendment, uh, the second floor amendment that's currently been, uh, referred to assignments. So it's, it's kinda going through this legislative process and kicking around in committees, so. Doesn't mean it's not gonna pass, but, uh, someone did do a floor amendment to it.
That's correct.
And the, uh, the red light, uh, sirens went off this morning when we got the email from I M L.
So, uh, yeah, Kevin, we'll get that information out to you.
Okay, thank you.
And Kevin, I think you'd agree, it'd be good to get it before the twenty third. Uh, was it Alderman Coleman, did you have?
For, for billing purposes, so what you're saying is we can get you the information and you're gonna, you wanna work on that?
Yes, we, we'll inquire, we, we can inquire about it and help out, that'll be no problem.
Okay, I, I appreciate that enthusiasm.
We'll make sure we understand all the, that I'm talking, that saying that, uh, Senator Johnson was for the bill.
Correct.
I wanna make sure we're on the same page here.
She's a cosponsor. What's the bill number again, David?
And, uh, it's S B twenty two sixty four. I think, uh, you know, I. Well, I, I won't say, but you know, her district is all, all the way out to Buffalo Grove. I'll just say it that way, so, but anyway, we still need to throw as much pressure on her. Know that we're, we're not in favor of it. Anyone, anything else there?
I'm up for the next one, mayor.
Okay. Entertainer, but what, uh, did you have a question or going into your committee? So, uh, if there's no more questions, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Coleman.
Yeah, um, is Mr. Kevin gonna be here the next council meeting, I can just ask him at the next council meeting?
Yes, sir.
You'll be at the next one?
Yes.
Okay, for a second time, we'll do the next one.
Very good, thank you very much, uh, hearing no others, entertain a motion to, uh, adjourn, uh, committee of the whole.
So move, second.
The move Alderman Jackson, second Alderman Allen, that, uh, committee of hosts stand adjourned. All in favor? Alderman Ray, all yours, turn the mic on, we wanna hear you.
It's supposed to be read? I would like to open the judiciary committee meeting, can I get a roll call, please?
Alderman Jackson. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans. Alderman Allen. Alderman Ray. Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman Brooks.
Present.
We have one item on the agenda, the discussion of review of an ordinance. Implementing a municipal grocery retailer's occupational tax. And municipal grocery service occupational tax for the city of North Chicago. I'm gonna let Greg explain that to y'all.
More good news, I, more good news out of, uh, Springfield. In February twenty twenty four, Governor Pritzker proposed permanently eliminating the statewide one percent grocery tax. The proposal was approved by the General Assembly in the summer of twenty twenty four and scheduled to begin as of January of twenty six. The state of Illinois imposes this tax, uh, six point two five on general merchandise, one percent on qualifying food, drugs and medical. Appliances, uh, so the one percent's charged on most food items for home consumption. This would be an impact to the budget of a hundred and five to a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. Uh, many communities have already adopted, uh, so what, what ends up happening is that by the end of the year, it goes away. Because, because they allowed time for non-home rule communities as well as home rule communities. To develop their own tax, there'll be no increase to tax on the, on the, on the consumables, it, it'll remain at the one percent. The difference is that money's not going to the state and coming, uh, coming through that, that vehicle, it's, it's a, uh, uh, city imposed tax. So it's one percent, uh, all we're doing is asking that this ordinance go before council for full approval. Once it's approved, we, we have until October of this year to get this to the Illinois Department of Revenue. So that come January one, they start collecting and we don't lose any time with the collection of revenues. This is a, groceries are a transient tax, because we know we don't have deeply rooted grocery stores here, so most people in this community are shopping at other. Grocery stores, but it does affect the, uh, Quick Mart's and things of that nature, so. We're asking that before the, to full council. There is no increase in tax, that, you know, that if we don't do it, we lose a hundred and five to a hundred and ten thousand dollars in revenue a year. Which means if we need to make that up for services, we're gonna have to find another taxing mechanism to do it. Likely that'll affect our residents more than a transient tax like a grocery tax. It, it is flush for us and, and we're not like raising it two percent, so we're one percent over what they were before.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any more questions?
So that we put on council for a vote?
I thought we was moving into.
Council.
To, to move to council, yes. No, just, I don't know, let Lori know that.
I'm asking for consensus to move to council.
Yes, yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor?
I'd like to open up the public works committee meeting, roll call. President.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans. Alderman Allen. Alderman Ray, here, Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Present.
We have one item, the discussion of ordinance to approve disposal of surplus, surplus equipment, we have Bob Nutt.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. We have, we, uh, compiled the list, there's fifty four items. Four of them are trucks and the rest of them are everything from welders that we don't use to, uh. Generators that we don't use, to mowers that have not been used in quite some time. There's some equipment that was sitting out back, uh, collecting, uh, dust and, uh, not being used. What we'd like to do is get rid of this equipment and, uh, uh, hopefully get some money for it. So that we can purchase a, uh, a new piece of equipment for, uh, forestry operations. The two trucks that are contained in this list that we presently use for doing aerial work on trimming trees. Are not able to be certified, so we can't, uh, we tried, we took them to a company that, uh. Uh, one said it can't be certified, it's too old, and the other one said there are no parts available for it anymore. So obviously, its value is limited, but it's certainly of no value to us if it can't be certified or repaired.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman. Um, quick question, uh, those list of items, are they gonna be itemized and sent to the alderman?
Uh, well, it was, it should have been contained, it was sent, uh, contained with the, uh, notice, uh, for committee action.
Okay, so those items are actually in those attachments, and those items, so for the record. The items that you have sent in those attachments, and we physically view those items?
We do not use those items, correct?
And we physically view those items?
Oh, sure, you can come down and we'd love to show you everything we got.
And those items will be the same.
Available and, and at Public Works.
Those items will be the same items that are attached to the attachment.
Correct.
Thank you.
Right, I asked, uh, one of our employees to do the best they could to take a, a legible, readable. Identifiable picture, put a VIN number down and identify it as best they could. So that you would have the best opportunity to understand what we're getting rid of.
But to the best of your knowledge, um, all of those items are in the attachments and the attachments is accurate and true.
Correct, uh, all the items that we are asking to get rid of are all contained in the attachments.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, uh, when we do the surplus, that we also let the citizens have opportunities to purchase that, because the citizen is the one that paid for it. If they don't do it, then you always send it out to wherever you wanna do, but always get a citizen opportunity. Taxpayers money that paid for though. I don't know how we gonna notify and let them know about it.
Well, there are several ways that we can get rid of it, and what we would suggest is, there are auction houses that put this stuff up. And then we can let our constituents know that that is where they go, we can give them a site to go to, so they can bid on it. Just like everybody else can.
Now, I'd like some people to know about it in the city, because everybody don't go and don't have computers, a lot of the seniors don't have computers and that. So they don't get the opportunity to know about it, and then I hear about it later on, say, why didn't you let me know about that? So I'm just saying.
Well, we will do it any way you would like us to do.
I'd like to make sure that the citizens get opportunities to bid on that, thank you.
A, a lot of that stuff is not even, like.
Some of it is, I hate to say this, but scrap.
Yeah, so we gotta be careful.
And we did have, we have occasion for vendors to come by. Looking and repair pieces of equipment we have, and we had an offer from one of the vendors that came in. Uh, to buy a motor, uh, a piece of equipment we don't use, and another one that's been sitting there for over twelve years. And they offered five hundred dollars each for those motors, so we do, we do, and we will. Let everybody know to come look at what we have.
I seen that on that five hundred, but I still want my citizens to have the opportunity, was they bought or not? Now I can shut that all down, I'm saying, that's just some Alderman Allen just speaking for that.
All right.
That's fine, let's make sure, cause I've, I've done, I know we have done surplus before and. In the city of North Chicago, we have given all the citizens an opportunity, in fact, I bought something from. So it is, it's successful for some items, but some of those items is not worth giving to the citizens, and we gotta be careful what we present, so. That is a good idea to make sure that.
Absolutely do, everything we can to make sure. Citizens get the first shot at it.
Wanna make sure. Okay, any other questions?
I just have a general question. Just because I'm new, um, when, uh, these items go, when, whenever purchased. How does the, the purchaser pay for those items to, to, to Public Works, standing in ways? How do those, how does that gets purchased, how do they pay for it, and where does it go? Just a lot of, from my own personal knowledge.
Something I would have to ask the comptroller. That would be a question for our money person.
Right, so it depends on how we sell, uh, the item, um, in the past, we, like Alderman said, we have an auction. Uh, we have a sheet of what the items are, how much everybody per, um, they, um, bid it for. And then once they win the bid, then they come into the controls and obviously make payments. Um, if we use the method through Enterprise for like a vehicle, um, Enterprise does whatever they do, and then, cause. Trucks and things like that, they have to go through the process of removing decal and things of that nature off of it and then. Um, whatever hat, what we sell it for at that point, then they send us a check, so it just really depends on how we're selling them the product. But everything comes to the controllers office as far as premium is concerned.
Alderman Jackson, so let me ask this question, do we have a minimum bid for this particular type of equipment or is just?
Well, right now, we haven't set that up. Bringing these things before you to declare them surplus, and then we will discuss how we want to sell them. We're not coming to you right now with that plan. Right now, it's just, we'd like to declare them surplus, that's step one. Once you all agree that you wanna get rid of this excess equipment. Then we'll decide how we do it.
I wanna make sure if, if we have a number or not on any of this stuff, so. Anyone else? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, Lori, we'll move forward on that. At this time, I'd like to close the public works committee meeting, so move. By Alderman Allen.
Second.
Second by Alderman Brooks, roll call.
Alderman Jackson. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans. Alderman Allen. Alderman Ray, Alderman Murphy. Alderman Brooks.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to call the, uh, Public Safety Committee meeting to order, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Jackson. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans. Alderman Allen. Alderman Ray. Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman Brooks.
Okay, at this time, we have one item of discussion, is the discussion of the summer public safety plan. And Assistant Chief Lund will be doing the presentation, chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, English member of the council, hope you're all well, chief extends his condolences, but he is on a beach in the Dominican Republic. Summer plan, uh, I'm not gonna bore you with all, every single minute detail, um, I'm basically gonna go over with Patrol Division and the investigations and S U. You know, be doing for the summer, um, Patrol Division, we're gonna be ducking extra foot patrols, traffic enforcement on high, um, uh, crime areas such as Hervey Village. Brookstone, Prairie View, Ten Street, Kukla Towers and Thompson Manor. Uh, conducted targeted traffic enforcement on places like Sheridan Road, Green Bay Road, along Audrey Nixon Boulevard. Argon Jackson, Martin Luther King, uh, Lewis, all of our, kind of our higher crime and our higher traffic unit a- areas. Uh, we're gonna be starting the traffic unit, all going well, we have several vehicles on order, uh, we have a new motorcycle. Um, and we're hoping to get that, and it'll hopefully be run by Officer Greer, if anybody knows Officer Greer, he's very much into traffic. If anybody knows Officer Greer, he's very much into traffic, rides the motorcycle, he's out there doing traffic stops on a regular basis. We also have two certified, um, uh, uh, truck enforcement officers who are actually certified in scales for overweight vehicles that destroy our roads, whether it be forty-one, forty-three, Lewis, Green Bay. Um, so the scales actually are put underneath the vehicles, are brought onto, um, uh, onto the, the scales and the fines are assessed per the, uh, the, uh, the weights of the vehicles. So, all going well. That's one of our, our biggest targeted areas for traffic enforcement will be in those areas. Uh, maintain high visibility in the high crime areas, uh, as we mentioned. Uh, target nuisance properties, uh, utilizing the nuisance abatement ordinance that we talked about earlier. Uh, when manpower allows, deploy felony, uh, vehicles in the, uh, high crime areas. Uh, work with the CSO, Community Service Officer, which is Officer Lesky, to report graffiti and report, uh, those reports we forwarded to Public Works for removal. Uh, shift commanders will be keeping statistics and the data will be transferred to myself, uh, before eight AM each Friday. Uh, the investigations in SOU or SIU, every time you see those designations, it's basically the drug and gang unit. If you see SIU or SOU, it's basically the drug and gang unit. Uh, those divisions will be reviewing catalogs and all cases involving shots fired or cases having gang connections, utilizing available resources to link those cases together. Uh, SIU is primarily gonna be, um, uh, maintaining areas in the high visibility patrols in the high crime and gang areas. Develop and share accountable and action information dealing with gang and drug activity. Conduct at least one gang suppression detail utilizing outside agencies when applicable. Uh, applicable, conduct an additional monthly suppression detail utilizing department resources. If you ever see the details we put together now, about once a month, starting in the warmer, uh, seasons, we put out a, uh, notification to all agencies in Lake County and we just say, hey, we're having a gang suppression detail. Would anybody like to participate? We're lucky we have a lot of great partners. Illinois State Police, Secretary of State Police, Gurnee, Vernon Hills, Round Lake Park, Zion, uh, the Sheriff's Office, all come out, the lending personnel, they come out and we go out and we kind of suppress the entire area. We target the high grain, gang crime areas. We pull over vehicles looking for narcotics and weapons. Um, they've been very successful. Usually within the first hour or two of the suppression details, the, the towns get very quiet. Everything just kind of, the word gets out, the police are all over and the, the town is quiet for the rest of the evening. So we've got a lot of success, got a lot of arrests and a lot of narcotics and weapons, uh, from those suppression details. Investigation supervisors will share all pertinent gathering intelligence with the shifts to create a targeted and comprehensive approach. All data will be provided to management analysts on a weekly basis by myself, reevaluation, extrapolation, and distribution. Community engagement, as many as you know, we are, we, we, that's one of our biggest targets is in, interacting with the community. We've done things with the meet and greet program, community watch groups and meetings, town hall meetings, prayer groups, uh, senior violence prevention workshops. We're gonna continue those throughout, um, and, and especially some of the higher crime areas such as Brookstone, Prairie View, uh, and such. Uh, utilization of technology, um, it, it's been immense, immensely important for us to have the technology and thank you all for, for voting and su- supporting these different things, whether it be ShotSpotter, uh, surveillance cameras, the LPRs, you'll see LPR, it means license plate reader systems. Uh, Evidence IQ is a new, uh, system that we brought onboard to let us process, uh, shell casings from crime scenes, uh, and the drones that we're looking at getting the grants for and, uh, start utilizing on a regular basis, so. It's a comprehensive approach. We're excited. Um, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
I'll go. Um, quick question. You brought the drones. Um, we've been waiting on a grant for those drones for a while. Uh, can we purchase? I know they're kind of expensive. Can we purchase one?
I believe the grant has been approved. What, so the grant's approved? I don't think we have the funds yet, correct though?
No.
Okay. And how much was that? Like twenty grand, right? They were like ten grand a drone?
I think they're twelve.
Andre, can you come up? Cause we can barely hear you if you don't mind, please.
They're about twelve thousand a piece, I believe.
About twelve thousand?
Yes, so, uh, we're planning on to get two of them. Like you said, one is gonna be grant funded. The other one is gonna come out of the police department's federal forfeiture fund, is what it's called. Um, and then he's correct, they're about twelve thousand each.
And are we gonna have them launched by the summer? When, when the crime rate goes up, are we gonna be launching them?
Like I said, we have a lot of drone pilots selected. We have actually an officer who is actually a certified pilot. We have several officers that have certification. So all going well, um, and like I said, we're pretty excited. They're, they're still limited on the use as far as they can't be used for general surveillance in the, in these areas. Uh, they have to be a response and evidentiary and then if you're gonna be posting it for an actual event, let's say, I mean, uh, the chairman knows for things like Ravinia, places like that, so. There's still limitations of what the federal and state government requires us to do with the drones, but I'm hoping over time that they'll, those will be get, there'll, there'll be less and less of those restrictions.
So we can't fly a drone over Brookside, but we can have a camera there?
You can have a camera, yeah. The drone, the drone limitations are very specific and, and, and you can't just use it for general surveillance. Believe me, I would love to be able to put them up on a Friday or Saturday over Brookstone or Prairie View or Hervey. Unfortunately, you cannot.
A high crime area.
Higher crime areas, like I said, if you have a gathering, but you, you have to basically follow the guidelines set by the FAA. So right now, it's gonna be for, you know, if it's an emergency response, uh, let's say we're gonna use it for evidentiary purposes, things of that nature. Or if you're gonna have like a community days event, you can basically post signs and let people know, hey, there's gonna be surveillance being conducted. But you can't use it for general surveillance over what we consider a higher crime area.
Okay. I was just thinking, I've been proactive and not reactive for this summer crime. Um, so it's a possibility, what you're saying, we might not have it completed by this summer, but next summer.
No, no, this, I, I believe it, I should believe it should be enacted by this summer.
Like there's logic.
Like the, the drone we have, we do have a, a very old drone now, unfortunately, that's, that's basically not operational, but getting the drones themselves should take a very short amount of time once we have the funding. Um, like I said, there are limitations, but we are excited because that will definitely be the future. I mean, their drones are being utilized inside residences now to conduct, uh, evidentiary. So let's say you have a crime scene, it's inside of a house or a building, the drone actually goes inside the building and scans and does all the, the, the evidentiary work that a person would normally do. So it's amazing piece of technology will save us hours and hours of, uh, uh, of manpower, you know, by utilizing that technology, so. But it can be used for things like search and rescue. Let's say you have someone with autism or you say have an, an elderly subject with dementia and they go missing, you can utilize it for search and rescue purposes, so.
Alderman Allen, you have a question?
Deputy Chief, I just want to let you know, I like this summer plan, patrolment investigation. This is the first time I've ever seen something like this right here. I want to thank you for starting it early enough so we can see how effective it is.
Yes, sir.
If you're implementing something, now we'll focus on you identifying that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that.
Chief, I got a question. Um, with the drones, have we identified a vendor that you're looking to purchase them from?
Yeah, we pretty much narrowed it down to the, the, the last vendor that we've, that we've selected. And like I said, we've done, we've seen, um, uh, all kinds of in-person and virtual demonstrations. Uh, some are exorbitantly priced, unfortunately, so.
Oh, yes.
I'm sure you know, working for the county. So, uh, if in the future, we're, we're always looking for opportunities and these companies are good about forwarding information regarding grants for different things, whether it be a technology grant. They're not shy about saying, hey, you might want to look at this grant. We have several grants we're looking for for other things as well. So I'll keep in the loop, sir.
Thank you. Alderman Brooks. Alderman Murphy.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I have a question and I do realize that, um, that Route forty-three is not North Chicago's jurisdiction. It's a US highway and I believe it's under, and certainly Assistant Chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's under state, so a state or county control sheriffs?
Yes, ma'am.
The county sheriff. Um, obviously, forty-three is an extremely busy highway. Um, but unfortunately, one of the problems is that as regular traffic slows down, you know, after the evening rush, what have you, while it's still fairly heavily traveled, there are quieter periods where there's a lot less traffic on the road. And forty-three, basically between one seventy-six, all the way to one thirty-seven and beyond, basically becomes a drag strip and it's predominantly motorcycle traffic, but not only. And the, I mean, we are talking about like nosebleed, bright neck speeds, right? Easily far exceeding the speed limit. Is there any way that we can, because that's the city limits and I understand that and again, I understand what's not ours to patrol and I'm not trying to put anything more on our, um, police forces plate. But is there any way that we can partner with the county? What can we do to mitigate that problem? Because it's kind of crazy.
I understand, ma'am. Can you hear me okay?
On forty-three.
Can you hear me okay, ma'am?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Uh, yes, let you know, we can do what's called targeted enforcement in conjunction with the other agencies. So we, we try to partner like I talked about before with the gang suppression details. Um, when we are doing, let's say, truck enforcement or speed enforcement or stop sign enforcement or school zone enforcement, what we can do is target a certain area and then ask those partners to, to join us, whether it be Lake Bluff, Lake Forest, the Sheriff's Office, State Police, Secretary of State Police, Metra. There's a million different organizations that are actually pretty excited to come out and work with us. If you say, hey, we're looking to do something and a lot of them are, a lot of them don't get the opportunity to come to areas like this and actually do police work. So when you tell them, hey, we're gonna do a detail, they're, they're very excited to come out and work with us. So we will approach those organizations, whether it be Secretary of State, State, County, um, to come out and actually, you know, join us, uh, in these areas. So it, it, and we learn a lot too because Secretary of State Police or Metro Police or whoever it is actually have all these different rules and regulations or different things that they can assess fines for that we weren't even aware of. So it really is a great partnership, so we're excited about it.
I would, I would really love to see that happen because I do know it, it's gotta be dangerous. And I mean, maybe because there haven't been a lot of accidents, maybe that's why it doesn't get the attention it deserves. Um, certainly there could be and frankly, even if it's the person who's doing the speeding, I would not like to see that happen. Um, but it, but it's gotta be, I mean, again, it, it's certainly a safety, I would think, a big safety concern. And, um, I think they actually must know the timing of like the different, like the, the lights, right? Like the traffic lights. Because I think if they plan it just right and they're going, you know, seventy-five, eighty, ninety miles an hour, um, they're gonna get nothing but green for quite a ways. Um, and even though this isn't as heavily traveled or as heavily populated, um, the traffic gets heavy again as you get up near, um, when it's out in North Chicago, but then you're in Waukegan, you're at the fountain, you know, Fountain Square area, what have you. Um, but it's not a good thing and I, I know, um, we're probably on borrowed time. Like I say, if nothing's happened yet, it's only by the grace of God that nothing's happened, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. We have, uh, we, we were awarded a micro grant, uh, through the state for traffic enforcement and we're, we're, we believe we're gonna get the macro grant, basically, which will allow us, you'll, you'll start seeing much, um, over the next probably several months, we're gonna be, we have to, as part of the, the grant, is promote on social media, um, what kind of enforcement we'll be doing. So you're gonna start seeing whether it be traffic enforcement, weight enforcement, uh, seatbelt enforcement, uh, DUI enforcement. You'll start seeing those on our websites and things we'll be targeting uh, in the certain areas we'll be doing it in, so we'll keep you in the loop.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Yes, Aldrin.
Okay, is there any other questions for Assistant Chief? Mayor?
Uh, Assistant Chief, I just wanna, and I, I, I know I say this all the time, but I wanted to make sure council hears me. You guys are doing a fantastic job. You know, I mean, we get our reports, I, and I think they go out to all the council in regards to, you know, stops that our officers are doing and they do it in a, in a professional way, but yet and still, they're bringing and taking things off the streets of our community that doesn't belong here, so. And, uh, you know, uh, I just wanted to let you know and again, just kind of echo it through council and the audience of, you know, how, how well our officers are out there on a daily basis. You know, um, pulling guns, pulling drugs off of our street, so appreciate it. Doing a great job.
Two things, sir. If you could wait till my boss gets here next time to say that, I'd appreciate it. And, and secondly, it's the young, we have a bunch of young officers, the past couple of years I've been here. Um, we're, we're in a very lucky situation right now to have so many young and hungry officers, uh, that love working for this community and they are getting drugs and, and guns off the street every single day. It's impressive to see, so. It's all due to them, uh, nothing to do with myself, to be quite honest, so they're, they're, they're doing phenomenal, so.
Right. Is there any other questions? Not, um, need a motion to adjourn the, uh, Public Safety Committee.
So moved.
But motion made by Alderman Allen.
Second.
Second by Alderman Evans. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, one quick one. Chief, sorry. I know that you, you guys are, you got animal control awesome.
Captain Chief.
And, and I'm sorry, animal control. Real quick. How is our cat population? Do you? Going?
I'm gonna be honest, in my personal opinion, it's gotten, when I first started here over two years ago, it, and I think was Alderman Smith was the first person to kind of alert me to the fact that there were so many cats and I thought, how many cats could be, oh my gosh, driving around. I said, this is unbelievable. It's like a cat sanctuary. But the past two years, I don't know if, and it's been a relatively mild winter. The population's been dramatically down, in my opinion. When I drive the, you know, we do the, the ward sweeps, um, driving the alleys, which they're mostly predominantly in, I've seen far, far fewer. It's really no- nothing to do with anything we've been doing. I don't know if it's more predators or, or what, but.
Seem, seem like I've noticed an increase.
Really? Alright.
I am too.
So I could talk, I could talk to the CSO and figure out if there's a, a, a plan. You know, we used to have an organization that used to come to town.
Fat cats.
Fat cats and then they would do some kind of a neuter and spade program.
Right.
I believe that's no longer in effect or didn't have funding, so I can look into it, sir, and let you know.
Okay. Please, please do.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman? Look in the fat cat, you're saying, or look into a solution?
No, just have him, the animal ward, not look in the fat cats.
Oh, 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 that's alright. I thought.
No, 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 no. We're gonna leave that one alone. We ain't bringing that back.
That's funny.
Thank you, Chief. Great, chief.
Yeah. Yeah, closed today. Like the, like the opening finance slash audit committee meeting, roll call?
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Ray. Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman Brooks.
Present.
One item of general discussion of purchase implementation of B and S and A purchase order module. We got to one, uh, General. Thank you.
Good evening. I felt like I've been up here so many times already, but I didn't get an opportunity to say hello to everyone tonight. Um, so I come to you, of course, uh, for everyone that's new, about a couple of years ago, twenty twenty-three, we purchased BSNA, um, cloud, uh, which is our ERP that we use for our financial system. Um, they offer several different modules with that system and we wanted everything to be integrated. So as the years go by, we would add additional modules as, as we see fit and when we have time to be able to implement new, uh, modules. Um, currently, we have the financial module, which is the general ledger where we do all of our accounting. Uh, we did, um, we have our AP as well, utility billing is on there. And then I think last one, the last module we brought on was our business license system. Um, so we currently have four modules with them. This one that I'm proposing is a fifth one. Um, this one kind of works in hand in hand with the AP system. It's a purchase order system. So, uh, basically what would happen with the purchase orders, currently, everything that's bought out through the city, um, by different departments would have to have, uh, what we call a purchase order in order, kind of approval beforehand, before they would be able to go out and purchase. This not, does not take the, uh, away the process that we, that we do right now, where you still have to get approval. Things over ten thousand have to come to council. Those things are all still in effect. This is just a way for us to be more transparent and, um, just to ensure that we're paying for everything that needs to be paid. Um, there was a situation where we had some older invoices that were out there that needed to be, be paid from a couple of years ago that we were not aware of.
Right.
And so if we had a purchase order system in the, in the, if we had the purchase order system in place at that time, then we would have been aware, this is something that we had utilized but never actually made payment for.
Questions to, to one. Alright. Chairman?
Alderman Coleman, go ahead.
So if there's an invoice out there that has not been paid.
Mm-hmm.
We can still turn, is there an expiration date on it?
No.
You still turn it in?
If you provided the service, then generally we have to pay for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let's say like, I, I had a ward meeting and I spent a hundred dollars and I didn't get my hundred dollars back about the year and a half ago. Can I still purchase, can I still put in for that?
A year and a half ago?
Yeah.
Um.
Or we lost, we, we don't have tracking of that because we don't have this system.
You know what? You could still put it, if it was from fiscal year twenty twenty-five, is that what you're asking? Cause we closed that in, um, July. So if you had something that was going on from fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which would have been, um, May one of twenty twenty-four to April thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, then yes, we will be able to accommodate you that. But if it's some, a receipt that you have that you didn't get reimbursed for and. But if it's some, a receipt that you have that you didn't get reimbursed for, and it was a legitimate business related receipt, then you can bring that in.
Okay, but it's gotta go one year back, is what you're saying, one year?
Yeah, that's what we would like, because the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, we're already working on those invoices. So since if you brought something, it will come out your current budget.
Alright, thank you. Any more questions? Which one, put it on for uh next council meeting?
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to uh close the uh finance slash audit committee?
So move.
I get it, move the Alderman, can I get a second?
Second.
Alderman Jackson.
No, who, Brooks?
Alderman Brooks.
Brooks.
Roll call.
Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Ray.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Brooks.
Aye.
Thank you, the finance audit committee meeting is closed, thank you.
Alright, I would like to open the Economic Development Planning and Zoning Committee, uh can I get a roll call?
Put the camera on you first. Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Ray. Here, Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Present. Okay, so there's one uh item of the discussion, and that is of the A T C, American Tower Corporation, cell tower contract proposal. At fire station number two, Taylor is up here, just in case anybody has any questions.
I can provide a brief uh summary of.
Yes, Ald Alderman Coleman.
Thank you, Alderman Brooks, yeah, um Mr. uh Taylor, can you please provide a brief overview?
That's where I was going. Uh we have an existing agreement with the cell tower owner and operator at the uh station number two out there on Buckley Road. This is a different cell tower than the one that was discussed last year, if you recall, we had some conversations about a tower that was gonna come down. This is a different tower, so different owner operator, uh so it's a separate conversation from that. But uh this owner operator approached the city and requested that uh we considered an amendment to our existing agreement. Essentially, they are asking for a longer duration for the agreement, um they are seeking um. Seven additional five-year terms, so the current agreement expires, if they take all their options, in twenty forty. That would be when it just naturally um ends. Um current agreement has five-year extensions up until twenty forty. At each of those five-year extensions, if they opt to to take those, there's an escalator in the rent that they would pay. And that would continue on in the proposed amendment as well, except the uh owner operator of the cell tower would have the option to keep that going in an additional thirty-five years. That's twenty seventy-five uh for those keeping track, so it's a, it's a very long term, uh but that's what they are seeking. Um for the additional term that they're proposing, they are offering a twenty thousand dollar lump sum payment to the city of North Chicago. And a ten-year rent guarantee, so that um we have at least collect ten years' worth of rent uh for that. Otherwise, it it pretty much maintains the current terms of the lease agreements.
Yes, what what would a ten-year add up to? If it was to.
Uh it's.
Exponent.
Just shy of three thousand dollars per month with the the rents uh right now, so that's thirty-six thousand dollars a year. Um so times ten, three hundred sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
That ain't bad.
Hope someone checked my math, but I think I got it.
I'm not, I'm just curious. I mean, I'm just curious, cause I wanted to know why they wanted the term so long, that's me, that's why.
I think for them, the uh purpose of the long-term lease is that, so that they can attract new tenants and sub-tenants to the the uh tower there.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, it's really neat.
Any other questions?
No.
So, at the, I have a question, and I I'm just only asking this because I think I asked you the question before. Um, five-year increments, and every, after every five-year, the rent goes up a little bit. At the end of a five-year, well, first of all, it's ten years of rent first, right? But after five years, who gets the option to terminate?
As with the existing agreement, it's all the option of the cell tower operator out there. So the city doesn't have an option to terminate unless they're in breach of their agreement with the city. So if you will, that's that's the risk of this agreement, is its term and it it's longevity, and it's been their option throughout that whole term.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Coleman?
Um, actually, I think that's not a bad idea, um with the long-term lease. Because in thirty few years, I don't even think we're gonna have cell phones, to be honest, the way technology is going. Um so we might have them locked into a thirty-year contract, we don't have cell phones. So but so that leads into the question, um right now, if we lock them in for thirty years, can they change it later? And say, hey, we wanna do a eight G tower, or we wanna do a different type of uh signal. Are they allowed to do that as well, or are they locked into the cellphone bandwidth?
So this, the the lease doesn't dictate the type of technology up on the equipment or the tower out there. Um but it is pretty much um a slate for them to install the equipment needed, or the uh facilities and structures needed. For wireless telecommunications, so it could even mean replacing the tower with a different tower. Um if they obtained the special use permit for that new tower, but um the lease itself doesn't dictate it's four G, three G, et cetera.
And and the reason why I'm asking that is because when five G came out, it was a big scare about cancer and five G radio waves and things of that nature. And I don't know how that was resolved, but that would be more of a concern moving into the future, into thirty years. Is we don't have any control over what radio frequencies they actually put out. Like ten G, twelve G, or like you say, it's their land, they can do whatever they wanna do with it, right? Is there?
Not whatever, but.
Within the zoning, or within the communications field?
And uh the city still would have a permitting process that they would have to submit through for new installation of equipment out there. And so they would have to provide documentation, for instance, of F C C um bandwidth um regulations that they're complying with all. Uh those federal regulations that do um have jurisdiction over that.
So we do have special permit powers over the cellphone?
I wouldn't call them special, but just normal city permitting procedures.
Okay, so if they wanted to build something that we didn't want ten G service, or we could say, no, we don't want that?
To the extent that they could not uh demonstrate compliance with federal regulations in that front, um or that it was um. Not consistent with the special use permit for the wireless telecommunications tower that's out there today, uh we could intervene. Or that if it was otherwise in violation, uh we're not compliant with city code or ordinances, we could intervene, but.
And for the sake of time, I'll release the. Let's be ready to go home.
Yeah, yep.
Alright, so if there are no more questions, um I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Alright, move by Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Ray, we can move this to the next agenda. Alright, all in favor to close the Economic Development Committee meeting, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's go.
That's what I said, you said, I'm worried.
Yeah. We worried about thirty years. May y'all be safe.
My kids gonna be here.